There you go. Call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. We will begin with an invocation by Councilman Tonsmire, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Step. You'll please stand with me.
Let us pray. We come with grateful hearts, Lord, for all the gifts you provide for us, for the freedom of this country to assemble and to make decisions which all members of the community can share. We ask your blessing upon all of us in this place, for those who serve our country in faraway places. In this we pray in your holy name. Amen.
May I join in the pledge?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the roll, please.
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Always lower that chair. All right, first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from August 4th. Councils had these well in advance, and tonight, Chair will entertain any additions or edits, and if there are none by council, I'll also entertain any motions.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second. Got a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a set of three public hearings to start off tonight. Mr. Tom, if you'll start us off with those, please, sir.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the property taxes received from the Cartersville MNO property tax millage are used for general city government purposes, such as police, fire, recreation, and public works. Proposed millage rate of 1.38 mils is considered the property tax rollback rate. It is the same as it was last year at 1.38. Depending on their property evaluations, homeowners will essentially pay the-- close to what they paid last year for the MNO property taxes. I recommend approval of the Cartersville MNO property millage of 1.38 mils for 2011.
Okay. Questions for Tom on this point? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and-- well, we're gonna go ahead and do the public hearing, and approve and go through each of those individually. I think that's the correct protocol. So, at this time, I will open up a public hearing for the City of Cartersville MNO. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the City of Cartersville MNO. And very discussion from council, or any questions, and if not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. The next one is for the city school system. Tom?
Honorable Mayor and Council, the City Council approves the property tax millage rate for the city residents where all the property taxes collected are used by the Cartersville School Board. For 2010, the property tax millage rate for Cartersville School Board was 17.23 mils. For 2011, the Cartersville School Board requests the City Council to maintain that millage rate at 17.23 mils. I do have a copy of their last board meeting where they did make the recommendation. I recommend that the council approve the Cartersville School System property tax millage of 17.23 mils for 2011.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on this side? Thank you, sir. And at this point, I'll open a public hearing for the Cartersville City Schools' property tax millage. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on the Cartersville City Schools' property tax millage. Chair will entertain any discussion or any motions.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the third one, Mr. Run.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the Business Improvement District, or the BID, is made up of the Downtown Cartersville Business District. These businesses owners have been self-assessing of property tax over the past several years to raise funds for the work to be done in the downtown area. The DDA, or Downtown Development Authority, works with the local businesses to use these funds to improve the downtown area. DDA requests this year council's approval to keep the Business Improvement District property tax millage rate at 2.50 mils for 2011. I recommend the approval of the Cartersville Business Improvement District property tax millage of 2.5 mils for 2011.
And that is the same level that it was at last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for the Cartersville Business Improvement District. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak either for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the Cartersville Business Improvement District property tax millage. And Chair will entertain any discussion, questions, or motions.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is in reference to Sunday alcohol sales. Mr. Lovell.
Mr. Mayor, the General Assembly has authorized local municipalities to be able to call a referendum to allow package sales by the drink on Sunday. We have prepared a resolution which will allow this to be brought to the voters of the City of Cartersville. Basically, if it is approved, it will allow Sunday package sales between the hours of 12:30 p.m. and 11:30 p.m., and it will become effective after the November election on December 2nd, 2011.
Assuming it's approved by the voters.
Assuming it is approved by the voters.
Okay. Any questions or comments or discussion?
Mayor, I have one here. Keith, we talked about this during our planning-- no, our planning session, but our work session, and you named some cities that you know are already putting this on the ballot surrounding us, because that does make a difference.
I believe Rome, Kennesaw, Acworth, I think Roswell, Milton, Alpharetta, Canton, and some of the other local cities, I believe I've heard they are considering it. I don't think any of them have actually taken official action as of this date.
But pretty widespread.
Yes.
Around us.
What about that one, Karen?
I have not heard of whether either one of them are, but it would not surprise me.
I will tell you, I've spoken with some of the business owners and some of the grocery store managers in reference to this, because they're actually the ones that, you know, they've kind of encouraged us to go ahead and put it on the ballot. Certainly, the legislature has given local people the opportunity to vote, and I would just say that this, you know, giving people an opportunity to vote, I think, is a good thing. We've got a general election this fall. We should have a good statistically, or hopefully a good turnout to where the majority will make a decision, and, like I said, this is simply something out there for people to make their own decision on and come out and vote either for or against, however you feel about it, and we'll proceed as the people want to. Any other discussion? If there's none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
What's for approval?
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Our next item is related to an intergovernmental agreement regarding SPOLOST 2014. Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, back in, I believe it was July-- your meeting was July 7th, y'all approved the proposed intergovernmental agreement on the upcoming SPOLOST election with the county and the other cities. Since that time, there's been a-- not a change in any of the actual individual projects, but a change in the actual funding mechanism for those projects and how the money will be dispersed. Based upon that, it was staff's feeling that this should be brought back to your attention for y'all to review it and to authorize it. The Commissioner will also be having a hearing on it next Wednesday, and I believe all the other municipalities have already approved the agreement. The basic change deals with the treatment of the property for the industrial park and the utilities associated with it, which will require payment of the land portion of that from the first couple of years of the SPOLOST collection through November of 2015. The city's portion will go exclusively for that, and then after that, the payments for the other two bond issues will be deducted as they are needed to pay off that debt, and all the other funds will be available for the other projects that are listed on the SPOLOST thing. By doing this, it is estimated by our financial folks that we will save around $5 million in interest on those three bond issues.
And just to give you a broad brush, countywide, we estimate over the six-year period that there'd be $220 million between 2014 and 2020. There are a couple countywide projects are in the agreement. That's the landfill, the 800 megahertz radio system. Those are at 27.5, and they'll come off the top with 220 million. City share is approximately 19.3 percent. That would leave us at 37,152.5. And I mentioned earlier that there's a project list on page 61 in your books. The projects that are starred on there are the ones that council priorities from our meetings in early 2011. There are a couple other ones that are thrown in. Fire Station 3, dressing up the Church Street Bridge, ball field lighting for Richard Bellfield, pool renovation, debt payments on the water plant, wastewater treatment plant for some upgrades there, remote meter reading, and the JDA Park stuff that Keith was talking about. But those are all covered in the agreement, and I think the agreement has to be done this month before the election in the fall.
That is correct. They need to forward it off to the Justice Department, just like we will for our Sunday sales election, for approval. And the date for that to be done is around September 1st for everybody.
So, anyway, that's what it includes, and it's recommended for council's approval.
Okay. Any discussion?
This final meeting that you spoke about, is that over a period of six years if a certain amount is collected?
The savings, you mean?
Yes. Well, actually, the savings is currently under the three bond issues, and they all have a sort of different payout schedule. They're currently are not scheduled to be paid out until, like, 2023. I think one's 2028, and the other one may be 2032. But by paying them off early with the SPOLOST proceeds, we would have-- we will save roughly $5 million in interest that we would have had to pay if we carried those bonds out to their maturity. It's the same principle as if you pay off your mortgage early, you don't have to pay as much interest.
The thing that that would do is give flexibility to the city and county and the JDA for the right business client at the park to be able to negotiate with them and create jobs out there that are really important right now.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Last one, but it is our intention to pay it off.
Yes, as this is-- as it's proposed. Now, if you want to, I mean, we can go and we can just carry the annual payment, and then you put other money into projects, and I did mention that to you all last meeting, and I think that you need to be cognizant that if you approve it this way, it's paying it all off. You can do it just to carry the annual payment, and that would pay it through 2020, and then you're probably gonna have to do the same thing then. So, that's really up to you.
So, you're saying tonight, if we approve this, we're paying off the JDA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's correct.
In other words, the second section down there is not being considered?
We're-- yeah, we leave 5.5 million available for other projects. That's correct. That'd go away.
Okay.
And the other thing is, if somebody comes out and buys some of the property out there, that can kind of change the amount of money that we need to get allocated.
During that timeframe, and if that's the case, then that money will be redistributed among the remaining SPOLOST projects or go to the general fund if there are SPOLOST projects that need the funds.
But did I not understand that we were doing the second option, Sam? Did I not understand that two weeks ago?
No, ma'am. That's an option for you to do.
Okay. I thought in the-- well, okay, I was--
I laid that out as that's an option, and I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that, and when you voted on this, that I didn't want you coming back to me and say, "Well, now, wait a minute, we didn't agree to pay the whole thing off." Because remember, when we got into discussion, it was like it was that we were going to put the annual payment in there, and that way it wouldn't be a drain on the general fund, and then we got talking to the county about it, and the county said, "Well, just pay the whole thing off," and that's what prompted this discussion.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
So, 7.6 million pays the debt for six years, 13.2 million, we're out.
You got it.
We've got nothing else to worry about.
That's right.
When the property sells, that then goes back into either SPOLOST projects or general fund? How's that?
Well, if some of the property sells before we actually pay the projects off, that money will be then freed up in the amount of money we have to use to pay off those bonds, so then you will have extra money in the SPOLOST pool.
Okay. All right. But in the end, it will be a generating revenue effect. We pay it off, we get new plant selling, we get new industry in, and we'll be putting money back into our local economy.
Correct. And in addition, one thing to remember, under the existing intergovernmental agreements, the city and the county are to be fully reimbursed all of this money. So, although maybe not right of way, but eventually, when all that property sells, all this money that y'all spent on SPOLOST will go back into the general fund for y'all to use for other projects down the road and in the future.
But now, let's be clear. That means in the next three or four years, though, we could have no additional SPOLOST money to do any--
That's not really accurate.
Okay. Okay. Well, I want that clear for you, please.
Well, I mean, you know, we've kind of laid it out that way, but that's not really accurate.
Okay.
You can borrow against future SPOLOST proceeds, and you can fund these projects. So, that's not really true that you're not gonna be able to do anything else.
But we did talk about--
If you're doing it to pay as you go, yeah, it'll take all the cash to pay off the debt, but you can actually borrow against future proceeds to fund other projects. And if you do everything in the first three or four years, there'll obviously be nothing left in your year five and six, but you can borrow against the net of it, which would be, I guess, 24 million.
Getting new industries is so competitive with other communities. If we pay it off quickly, what advantage is that in recruiting?
One has to wonder, and it's interesting that we had the opportunity to talk to some people from Rome yesterday about some other issues, but they were in the office, and we did talk about the location of the Lowe's distribution center that went over at 53 and 140. And, you know, they made the joke, I said, "Well, how'd you get that?" And they made the joke that, well, y'all were asking too much for the property, and also you need to recollect that they've got 100% on Freeport, too. So, those two things may have come into play.
And they gave up some school money, Sam.
And I know, and I know that they didn't look at us, that that distribution center looked at us. And it's, you know, times change. We used to say that we didn't want distribution centers, but, you know, that was 600 jobs.
600, 1050 an hour, minimum.
For people that don't have work, that would've meant a lot.
They did give up school money, but it was only for--
Three years.
And then the schools would benefit greatly. So, it's, you know, a balancing act.
All right, council, there are no other discussion on this item, the intergovernmental agreement regarding the 2014 SPOLOST.
Well, frankly, Mayor, I'm still conflicted at the two options, because I thought I should've read it more carefully before coming. Certainly, it's my fault, but--
If we sell some property out there, you just might get enough money to put those quiet zones in yet. That's your conflict.
Well, I just want us to have some money to do some things that the community is interested in, Mr. Grove. Okay. So, your recommendation to this council, Mr. Grove, is?
Go ahead and pay it off.
Okay.
We really do need to pay it off, Sam. It may be a long period of time before we can get some trustability in that area, and we're just dishing out money in interest.
Well, there's no question, and we're all about jobs. This council certainly is in everything we do, so I just want to make sure I understand.
I think it'll be a positive.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I gave you conflicting signals, but I wanted to be sure that I disclosed that to you, and that it wasn't a staff-driven thing, and that it was completely transparent.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Do you all need some prodding, or we've done this before? No more discussion, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. All right, next item is the election superintendent appointment.
Mr. Mayor, as we do before every election, the city has, we have to appoint an individual to be the election superintendent to run and manage the election. Ms. Keeling is the only person qualified on the city staff to do that, and she has graciously volunteered to be election superintendent once again. I would recommend that y'all approve the resolution appointing her.
Since I know there's no questions or discussions, Chair will entertain a vote.
Well, we appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Got a motion to approve. I would take a second over here. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Connie.
Tag, you're at Connie, and as your reward, you can handle the next item regarding the Barto County Board of Elections.
Yes, sir. As you know, in the past years, the elections have been conducted by Barto County Board of Elections as recommended by the state of Georgia. The agreement before you is less than past years due to the county conducting elections for other municipalities within the county this year, so we are not paying the entire cost of staffing for absentee voters. Estimated cost for this election will be $8,616, and I recommend it--
Any questions for Connie on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Send it.
Everybody's jumping at us. Got a motion here and a second there. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Next item is regards to the Adairsville High School Aquatic Center.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. This is an agreement that for us to lease the Adairsville High School pool for an indoor swim team. I would like to thank Ms. Tate for her efforts in this kind of reached a standstill, but she was able to get us together with the superintendent and help us get this to go forward. But anyway, this is agreement used the facility. The city attorney, Mr. Lovell, had reviewed this, and there's a couple of questions he had on the guidelines, and I have forwarded that back to the school system, and they have not responded yet. But I would like you to approve this contingent on the city attorney and the city manager approving the final copy of this agreement.
Well, I tell you, we've discussed it, and if you want to go ahead and line through 10 and 11 and initial it to send it over to, then that'd be fine with us.
That would be page 81 and 82 of the package.
That way, you'd go ahead--
Which, to sum that up, Keith, is?
Basically, what that provision is do-- what those two provisions do are provide an indemnification of the Barto County School Board. However, we are a local government, and local governments under state law have sovereign immunity. We don't have the power to indemnify other entities, and we don't have the power to waive that requirement. Now, the school board is fully protected because we're buying and providing insurance for the operations there, so there's no real difference in the effect of the agreement. It's just that we can't indemnify them as they requested.
So, if a motion were to be made to approve this, provided that items 10 and 11 were struck from the contract, that would be in order?
That would be yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson, or any discussion on this item?
Mayor, just--
Just to make sure Diane got to ask a question, go ahead and--
Just so people will know, we have enough participants to pay for the monthly cost, which is $500. We're close to having the number of participants--
We are. We have 41 that has registered as been taking this program for about the last two weeks. So, and, you know, so we do in fully, and we still have a lot of the Cartersville High School swim team that's not signed up with us yet, but we do expect to have over 50, which we need about 45 to break even.
And I would guess, once it gets cold, everybody'll probably be a little more excited about--
We hope so.
Using the indoor--
Yes.
But it is a win-win for the county and the city--
It is. You know, again, I can't speak for the county's school system, but they're getting, they're having, they're getting part of their pool maintenance paid, you know. They've got to do it anyway, so they're receiving an extra $500 a month to go towards that, so.
And someday, we'll have a pool.
Hopefully.
And again, I asked this in the work session, and I guess more clarification, what age group is this?
We will-- this is from 6 to 18.
Okay. Because I know that, you know, the concern of the few that I talked with was during the school year, you know, 8 to 10 is awfully late. Well, does, I mean, is that something we're still gonna be using? Will we get enough use out of that?
Well, you know, we will have our, you know, our Monday through Thursday and then Saturday, but, you know, again, during the high school season, we're not the priority in that pool anymore, and we have to take what's available, and after 8 o'clock is available. And, of course, we'll do the younger ones first, and, you know, of course, you know, it's not ideal, but during that time, that's all, that's the only time that we have.
And just as an FYI, I've had kids that swim, and the other option that you've got is you can send them south and have them swim with Marietta stingrays. At the time, they swam, it was a 35-minute trip one way, and then they swam, and you gotta go down and bring them back, and it would've ended up being later than that.
And plus, I will say that, you know, our fees anywhere between $50 to $65 a month, it's about a third of what it would cost to go, you know, to the stingrays or something like that monthly.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions for Greg on this item? If there are none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to vote, or?
I was being called off of my motion. Do we need to amend that with our 10 and 11 being in there?
I'll undo to do that, clarify that, if you would like to.
I will. I'll reopen that item if you'd like to--
I'd like to make another motion.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve striking 10 and 11 from, what do we call that?
The agreement.
Be a agreement.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so as I heard it, not how it was said, but as I heard it, a motion has been made to approve the agreement with the school system for the use of the pool, striking items 10 and 11 in that agreement. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
See, I want--
Let's go to something a little bit easier, Mr. Ford.
Yes, Mayor, I've got a rental agreement for our third floor of the DDA building. Liz Hood has met with the AIDS Alliance and Lola Thomas, Executive Director, and they're willing to rent the third floor of the building with some common areas and use that building, the first floor, particularly at the conference room and the kitchen area. Rental rate will be $2.50 a month plus half utilities. I recommend this for your approval.
And they have all applicable insurance that goes along with that?
Correct.
Everything's in line?
Yep.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bobby, you've got the next three items, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a consent-to-write-of-entry agreement between, and I hope I don't butcher his name, Richard Grifolio, who lives on Bob White Trail, to gain access to his property in order to work on a drainage channel that runs between his property and his neighbor. We've been having some severe flooding conditions in the area. He has asked for some minor concessions, or primarily to be careful. He's got some big oak trees. He didn't want the roots torn up, and those kind of things, and we recommend approval so we can get this project started.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just a question relative to that. I've been down there, and I, of course, have seen pictures of the water, and they called me, and called you, and emailed and spoke. Will a bigger pipe move the water out of Ferguson's yard?
Sam, I don't think, I guess the answer, the plain answer to that question, yes, but we can't go too big because of fear of flooding, releasing more water faster downstream, so we've got it dialed in. we've got it dialed in. We think that it's going to, it's going to make drastic improvement to it.
I'm glad you're doing it, and I hope it fixes the problem, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Summated.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, Bobby.
Yes, sir. We have the Georgia DOT state aid contracts for the Main Street Gateway, where for there, giving us $500,000 toward the roadway and another $400,000 toward the landscaping of the project. These have been a while coming, getting things worked out, but we've got them now, and we recommend approval. Get them back to GDOT where they can get theirs executed and get them back.
All right. Any questions on this item?
Just a comment, Mayor. I think you and the city manager both need to have congratulations for working on this, Bobby, you and Tommy. I mean, a lot of people, this has been a long time coming. It's going to be a real asset to the city coming in Main Street, so, Mayor, congratulations.
Well, we had your help, if you recall, from Paul Battles.
Big time.
Bill Heath.
And the GDOT Commissioner.
We're just going to do a quick vote, and really, there's a lot of time that's gone into this, and people are going to notice the big difference. Thank you.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we had, back at late June, we had a call from Barto County Water Department about a small hole in their parking lot over here, Roosevelt Street. And when the guy called me, he said, "I hate to tell you, but I think this is going to be serious." And he was right. Small hole in the asphalt. What was underneath, you could put, you could stack two pickup trucks in the hole. We had a major 84-inch pipe collapse. And 84-inch pipe, you can walk through it without a problem. And most all the other joints in that segment, 160 feet, were ready to fail. So I got with Mr. Grove and Mr. Ford, and we, based on where it was and all the foot traffic going on at the plaza, we felt like it was in public's interest and safety to go ahead and get it repaired. We called the contractor that we've used before. We trust him. We, he did most of the digging, most of the, most of the equipment labor, and we did all the trucking with everything else. We, we bid out everything that reached the threshold of the $5,000 limit. This 84-inch pipe that we priced, actually, we put 102-inch diameter pipe in there, which is eight and a half feet diameter. That alone is $25,000 just for the pipe. So, took us 13 days to complete, but we ended up trucking out everything. We dug up stumps, tires, you name it. Trucked all that out, brought in good quality red fill to put back and compacted back in. $89,000 and change. Let's see what I got. $89,207.35. If we had to bid this out, we would have been in the $125,000 range based on GDOT's bid line items.
How, how, how long has that pipe been there? Has that, it been there long enough to where it could have been failed? I mean, it's...
The pipe, the original three sections were put in about 30 years ago, but there's been some stuff added since.
Did we get all of it when we went in?
We took it all out. We took it all out, redid all of it. So.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Elliott on this one?
Mayor, this, the funding came from 2003 stormwater sploshed.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Chief Culpepper, you've got the next item, please.
Mayor, council members, the police department is, needs to purchase five police cars to replace old cars that need to come out of service. We sent out 11 bids and received six bids back. When we sent out these bids, we sent out four Dodge Charger, Ford Crown Victoria, and Chevrolet Impala, three of the most commonly used police cars. We were looking for the best price. That's when preference of a vehicle was, wasn't paramount at this time. We were just looking for the best price, trying to save money. The best bid that we got was five new 2010 Dodge Chargers from Butler Chrysler Plymouth out of Buford, South Carolina for $99,900. That is the lowest, and we consider the best bid. We're asking that you would accept that one and approve the purchase of that. The next closest bid was from Clint Brandon out of Unadella, Georgia, and it was $8,550 more than the lowest bid. The Dodge Chryslers have proven to be good vehicles. LAPD Sheriff's Department vehicle test this year rated them better than the Fords based on the criteria that they used. They were better in fuel economy. They were rated better in stopping distance and better in horsepower. We have had some issues with the Fords in the past. We've painted parts or all of about 13 different Ford Crown Victorias because of paint failures, and we've had a number of them that had to have transmission work. The new Ford that's coming out would put us in the guinea pig stage, and we don't want to be the test bed for a new vehicle. The Dodge is, as I said, a good vehicle. It's holding up well. This would be paid for out of DEA seized funds asset forfeiture, so there would be no cost to the, to the taxpayers. So what we are asking is that you approve an amount up to $210,000 to cover the vehicles and equipment that has to go into them, which is budgeted under the DEA account for the 2011, 2012 budget year.
Any discussion on this item?
Mayor, I've got a question. Chief, are we now able to buy, I mean, this may be a legal question, but are we now able to buy all of our police cars through DEA funds?
Yeah, we're all...
If we have the money, yes.
As long as you do that for years.
I know, but I mean, all of them. I mean, sometimes there's a question what DEA funds can be used for.
That's not, not really.
That's not one of them.
No. I mean, any law enforcement equipment, fixtures, furniture, you know, weapons, anything like that that they use in their day-to-day business.
As far as you're okay.
They can buy. They can't use it for salaries.
You can use it for almost everything but people.
Yeah.
Not buildings, not buildings.
Buildings.
Yes, you can use it for buildings.
We're saving part of it to go in over here.
Actually, we've also used, I believe, part of the money for the current communication tower the city uses. They've used it for that, that type of equipment. Anything the police department uses in a day-to-day situation, any type of equipment, is what you can use DEA funds for.
Yeah, it's a little bit messed up, and you're going to continue to kind of count on people to break the law and take their money from them and use it, but as long as they're going to do it, we'll take advantage of that.
Well, it saves a lot of taxpayer money, certainly, Josh.
Chief, how many total patrolmen do we have right now?
Patrol officers in the uniform division, we have 34 people in the uniform division.
What did we have this time last year?
We were probably about 30 this time last year.
We haven't authorized any units, just to, what's vacant and what's not. It's, it's...
But you were just saying earlier that we just built up...
We filled our authorized vacancies. We've, we've had some vacancies intermittently in the last couple of years, and we've just, it takes about six months to process a tenant through and hire.
And do you think what we, we approved in the budget with that salary adjustment, did that help us fill those two, or that probably didn't fill them?
Yes, yes, very much so.
From Butler Chrysler, are those new Dodge Chargers?
Yes, sir. They are new. A great many of the dealers that deal in fleet vehicles have taken to purchasing vehicles ahead of time. They'll, they'll purchase them in large lots, and they sell them directly from their lot, and that way they don't have to wait on order time because it could be anywhere from a few weeks to a few months to get a vehicle in.
My question, if I asked you, this show was here 2010 Dodge Chargers.
Correct.
That's the type of, 2011, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's a 2010, but it's a brand-new sitting on a lot.
Oh, okay.
That's why they were able to lower the price.
This is state bid?
Okay, same warranted?
It's actually competitive with the state bid, yes.
And I mean, I just one quick question. It's not really significant. I'm just curious. Are you staying with the white color or are you going to a different color?
The white.
You're staying with the white?
Purple, gold.
Yeah, for a while it was brown, then you went to white, and I'm just curious if that's where we're going with the black.
No, hurricane clothes.
It's clear.
Gold would be really cool.
Any other questions?
Just another comment.
Yeah, go right ahead. We got all night.
You know, coming off the top.
I was curious.
You know, our, our fines and forfeiture's are really been on the rise, and black cars could hide better. We could probably pick up, pick off some more things.
That's an interesting concept.
I like the white.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the low-bid police purchase vehicles through DEA funds.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. All right, Ed, come on up. We've got some pumps to purchase.
Mayor, council? One of the bio solids press feed pumps at our water pollution control plant is worn out and is in need of replacement. We're kind of locked into replacing it with the same manufacturer pump so that we don't have to modify piping. The vendor for this particular piece of equipment is Carl Eric Johnson. They have given us a price of $10,510.87 for replacement of this pump. It will be paid for from the maintenance item in the budget.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and lump together this next item and then potentially another?
The next one is a solids pump that's used in the process at the water pollution control plant. And the same thing here, we're actually just replacing the moving parts inside the pump, so we're locked into a particular manufacturer of pump equipment. And the vendor for this is GPM Incorporated. They have given us a price of $7,225.50. We feel this is a fair price, and it will be paid for from the maintenance line item in the budget.
Okay. Is there any discussion on either one of these two items? And if there is none, Chair will entertain a motion on both of these items.
Motion to approve both of these items.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I'll ask council to enter, to entertain a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The item is added.
I do apologize for emergency addition of this, but we do feel it is an emergency situation. The item we're asking to purchase is an actuator on the raw water valve on the line, feed line coming into our water treatment plant. This went out about three weeks ago, and it has left us in a position that if we have to change the flow rate of water coming into the plant, or we have to do a shutdown, we have to have two people present. A lot of shifts, we don't have two operators at the plant, so it would require overtime. But it also presents a condition that if we had to have an emergency shutdown, it would be a delay on, on getting that shut down. We could have flooding at the plant. It also involves sending somebody into a confined space to manually operate the valve. So we do think this is justified as an emergency purchase. The, we received a price of $8,745 from Harold Beck and Associates, and we've received the e-Verify and Save documentation. So we would like to receive approval for this purchase.
Budgeted item?
Pardon?
Budgeted item?
Well, it is budgeted as far as we, we had money set in, in the budget for maintenance and repairs, so.
Okay, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ed. All right, Mr. Ryan, our time for the monthly financial statement.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the June 2011 and comparing to June 2010. I would like to point out that these are on a cash basis. They are unaudited statements, and keep in mind that the, as we go through the year-end close process, these numbers may and probably will change as we make adjustments for such items as depreciation expense, bond accruals, and fixed assets. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year, June 2010, leveled by $36,000. Expenses have increased by a little over $2 million. This is due mainly to increased personnel costs, operating expenses, and capital expenses. If you remember, we did reclassify the two fire trucks that were purchased back in December from a capital, I'm sorry, from a balance sheet item to a capital expense. Three areas of revenue that I look at are the local option sales tax. We've increased over last year's rate of about $62,000 and some change. Police fines and forfeiture's also increased by $82,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have decreased by about $7,700. In the water and sewer fund, revenues decreased over last year's June 2010 by $491,000. This is due largely to the decreased capacity fees and decreased fines and surcharges. Expenses also, I'm sorry, expenses increased by $451,000. This is due mainly to increased operating expenses and capital expenses. And if you remember, the capital expenses are largely due to the repairs at the water treatment plant. In the gas fund, revenues have decreased from June 2010 by $2 million. Expenses have decreased by $59,000 due mainly, due mainly to decreases in the personnel costs, operating costs, and cost of purchased gas. In the electric fund, revenues have increased from last year by $986,000. Expenses have increased by $2 million, and this is due largely to the increase in cost of purchased electricity. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased from last year by $13,000, while expenses have increased by $473,000. This is due, if you remember, to the large increase in the capital expenditures for the various projects that we worked on within the stormwater. In the solid waste fund, revenues decreased by last, from last year by $10,000, while expenses increased by $46,000 due largely to increases in personal expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $102,000, while expenses have increased by $25,000 due mainly, large, due mainly to increased operating expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Okay. Any questions on the financial report?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. This is the fourth and final presentation where we're going over the results from the citizen survey that we conducted in the spring of this year. Just a few housekeeping items, as I've mentioned in the past. The survey is available in its entirety. It's posted on the city's website, so if you're interested in looking at it in greater detail, we encourage you to do that. Another couple items, we have a 30% response rate on this, which is within the normal range of response rates for this type of survey. The margin of error is plus or minus 5%. And any change from year to year that is equal to or greater than 8% is considered statistically significant. So with that said, I'll move forward. If the remote works, I will move forward. Did you do that, or did I do that? Okay, Parks and Recreation, we asked, this is actually the first time we've ever asked this question, so we don't have a trend, but we asked folks how many had used Carterville Parks and Recreation Centers at least once in the last 12 months. 69% of the respondents supported having done so. That is much above both the national and southeastern norms, so it looks like we're getting good use out of our recreation centers. Obviously, mine's working, yeah.
Hey, every time Richard's not here.
Operator, I think.
Right.
Operator, sorry.
Security for Richard, I think.
So the folks who obviously visited the recreation centers, we asked them what they thought of them, how they rated the recreation centers or facilities. 76% responded that they were excellent or good. That is above the national and southeastern norm, so not only are we having more people go, but they also think highly of them, which that makes sense. Oops. Can you go back for me? Can you go back for me, please? Thank you. Participated in a recreation program or activity, 53% responded that they had. We did see a little bit of a decline there. However, it is still above the national norm and much above the southeastern norm. Recreation programs or classes of those that attended, 79% rated them as excellent or good. That is above the national norm and much above the southeastern norm. We asked who have visited a neighborhood park or city park at least once in the last 12 months. 86% responded that they had. 86% responded that they had. That is similar to both the national norm and similar to the southeastern norm. We asked them to rate those city parks. 85% responded that they were excellent or good. That is above the national norm and much above the southeastern norm. So, as a, on the whole, it appears that our Parks and Recreation Department is fairly, very highly regarded amongst the citizens of our community, so I think that. Ray, should you take a bow? When we get into the utility services, this is a rating of power and, which includes electric and/or gas, of which we have, we offer both through the city. 82% of the respondents rated them as excellent or good. That is above the national norm and much above the southeastern norm. I think that that's something that's strong for the city, not only does it help pay for the services that, that we provide, but also the quality of the service is perceived as being very good as well, so, win-win. Drinking water, again, we're not surprised here, we know we've got great drinking water. 76% rated as excellent or good. That is much above the national norm and much above the southeastern norm, so that's not surprising, but we're definitely very happy to see that positive trend continue. Sewer services, 79% rated as excellent or good. That is above the national and southeastern norms. Really good at getting rid of biosolids. Storm drainage. 60, 63% of the respondents rated it as excellent or good. You definitely see some improvement once we launched the stormwater utility, I believe it was 2008. Similar to the national norm and above the southeastern norm. Garbage collection, 84% responded that it was excellent or good. That is similar to both the national and southeastern norms, and that's a stable trend. Yard waste pickup, I know that that's something that Bobby takes a lot of pride in, we do feel like we offer an excellent level of service, particularly with yard waste. 76% rated it as excellent or good, and that is above both the national and southeastern norms. Recycling, this is an area where we knew that we were going to suffer, we, the city hasn't really offered any sort of recycling, other than a few collection points that the county operates throughout the city. So 50% rated that service as excellent or good, which, as we expected, is much below both the national and the southeastern norm. When we look at the percent of individuals who reported having recycled used paper cans or bottles from their home in the last 12 months, 63% claimed having done so. Again, that's much below both the national and the southeastern norms, so. On one hand, these results were expected, because we don't have a curbside collection service. However, as you guys approved in the recent budget, beginning in January, we're prepared to launch a new curbside recycling program, so we anticipate these numbers to go up dramatically the next time we conduct this survey, so. Land use, planning, and zoning, 53% of our respondents rated that as excellent or good. That is much above both the national and the southeastern norms. And actually, it appears that that has trended up rather steadily since 2003. Want you to come on board, Randy?
2003.
Okay, makes sense.
Wonder how much you got paid for that one?
Code enforcement, weeds, abandoned buildings, this is the percent, okay, this is a rating of the code enforcement service, excellent or good. 43% rated as excellent or good. That is similar to both the national and southeastern norms. When asked if they saw rundown buildings, weed lots, junk vehicles as a major problem, only 12% responded that it was a major problem, and that is similar to both the national and the southeastern norms. Public information services, 67% responded that it was excellent or good. That is similar to the national norm and above the southeastern norm. We know, we've heard often in the past, that the Carterville newsletter is something that people very much enjoy receiving and reading. 88% of the respondents claim to have read the newsletter at least once in the last 12 months, and that is much above the national and southeastern norm. So I know Rebecca works hard to put that out, and does a good job, obviously, from the results here. Visited the city of Carterville website, we're at 59% of our respondents claim to have visited the site at least once in the last 12 months. That's similar to the national norm and below the southeastern norm. That number is actually trending up pretty, pretty rapidly, though, so it'll see, be interesting to see how that, if that trend continues. When asked to rate services to youth, sort of a generic question, but the services to youth, 62% responded that it was excellent or good. That is above the national and southeastern norm. Services to seniors, 66% rated that as excellent or good, similar to the national norm and above the southeastern norm. Services to low-income individuals, 51% rated that as excellent or good. That's above the national and the southeastern norms. Used Carterville public libraries or their services, 73% reported having done so in the last 12 months at least one time. That is similar to the national and above the southeastern norm. Public library services, 86% rated them as excellent or good. That is above the national and southeastern norm. We asked who had had contact with city employees in the last 12 months. 56% of the respondents reported having had contact with a city employee in the last 12 months. There's a drop-off of about 12 percentage points from the previous.
You think that could be potentially more people using the bill pay, since a lot of people, utility customers, maybe doing more stuff online?
That's a good point. I, I couldn't answer that confidently, but it certainly, we could go take a look at the number of people who have used online web pay as an alternative to walking into the office. That's actually a good theory.
Or, in our business, we would say that's a good sign, that, you know, they're not having to see you, so you're doing a great job.
That's right, like servers, just get it done, and don't be noticed. Okay, we're, we're now talking about the Carterville employees, individual characteristics for those who had had contact. We asked them to rate their knowledge. 85% responded that their knowledge was excellent or good. That's similar to the national norm, above the southeastern norm. responsiveness, 75% rated it as excellent or good. That is similar to both the national and southeastern norms. courteousness, 81% responded that it was excellent or good. That is similar to both the national and southeastern norms. And overall impression, 78% responded excellent or good. That is also similar to the national and southeastern trend, excuse me, norm. Okay, we asked the job that Carterville government does at welcoming citizen involvement. 58% responded excellent or good. That is above the national and southeastern trend, norm, excuse me, I keep confusing those words. We asked them to rate services provided by the federal government. 43% responded that it was excellent or good. That's similar to both the national and the southeastern norm. And you're going to see a trend here that's pretty well-established, the further away a government is, the less valued it is, it seems like, by survey respondents, so. We asked them to rate the services provided by the state government. 46% rated that as excellent or good. That's above the national norm and similar to the southeastern norm. Services provided by Barto County Government, 69% believed that it was excellent or good, and that is much above the national norm and the southeastern norm, when people were asked to rate their county, obviously. And services provided by the city of Carterville, the survey says 80%. That is, that was a flop. That is much above the national norm and much above the southeastern trend as well, norm.
I was just afraid you were going to do a Richard Dawson, come over and kiss every one of us.
I hadn't practiced for that one.
Don't give my ideas.
The value of services for the taxes paid to Carterville, to me, this is a really important metric. 65% believe that they were excellent or good, and that is much above the national and southeastern norms, so that is a really good sign, I think, and I think that the utilities are probably a big, big part of the reason why that, that is the way it is. And last but not least, the overall direction that Carterville is taking. 65% responded that is excellent or good, and I'm happy to say that that is much above both the national and southeastern trend. So, that is the final slide. I've very much enjoyed presenting this information, and I think that it's really valuable information for the, the staff, and for council, and for people out there to just know what their neighbors are thinking. And I really do encourage folks to go online, explore this a little bit, and if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to take those at this time.
With the exception of the survey says, well done on the presentation, this is the way it's laid out. Any questions for Tom?
On this, I mean, I know that we, we had, you know, we sent out, we basically just get a sampling. Next year, can you, could you set that up online, where anybody that clicked on could actually do the survey, or is that one of those that you don't want to do that because?
It's not scientific.
That's, it's no longer scientific, once you do that. We can certainly, we have the capability to do web surveys.
I guess anybody from anywhere in the nation could do it.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, and then you could get, you know, somebody says, hey, all my buddies, let's get together and go, you know, click on this and vote one way or another, whereas this is randomly selected individuals, so. So this, this information is, you know, pretty dependable, you can really kind of rely on it. I know in the past, you know, a perfect example of that is when we polled folks on the Sunday alcohol sales in restaurants, 59% said that they strongly, or strongly supported or somewhat supported. We, you know, put it on the ballot, and it came back, 59% approved it, so I mean, it was like a crystal ball.
How many votes did we have on that, Rebecca? It was about like a million on the yes and no's on that alcohol sales?
Yes. They didn't want to go back the next day, or even, even later.
I think he's talking about the survey.
He's talking about the survey, not the online voting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about the survey gave us that, but yeah, I'm sure that was probably a lot different.
Yeah, it was.
So in our schedule with this, we've done it every two years. That's, seems like a reasonable timeframe to do this on, but, you know, in talking with the National Research Center, the organization that does this for us, they, they think that that's a good schedule to do it on, so, you know, in two years, we'll be going back to do another version, I imagine, if, if the council is interested at that time, and, like I said, I think it's really valuable information, so. I appreciate y'all's time, I know these have been some long presentations, so.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else needs to come before council? No? Very good. Motion to adjourn. Or adjourn, and get a rump on it.